I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, December 6, 2016, 2018, 5:30 PM. Remind everybody to silence their phones and get all your blue slips to Ms. Jessica before the item comes up. And speaking of Ms. Jessica, happy birthday.
Thank you.
To Ms. Jessica who does a lot for us.
Happy birthday. Should we all sing along?
Yeah.
We can do that. We can leave that after.
Hey Jess.
Happy birthday Jess.
Item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. McMillan.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the grace you pour out upon us. We ask a special blessing on all the people that are here tonight. We ask a special blessing on our families. We ask that you give us wisdom and knowledge tonight as we go through these items on the agenda. Dear Lord, we also want to say thank you for your son, Jesus, and the reason for his birth here at Christmas time. We ask a special blessing on this parish, this state, and this nation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Say with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Item number three, roll call.
Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pahn is at the executive board meeting. Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnham?
Here.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Guillory is at the executive board meeting as well. Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
Ms. Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Trimmie is at executive board. Vice President White?
Here.
And President Baer's.
Here, thank you. Item number four is a hold of public meeting actions, so we're going to come to that at 6:00 PM. And we'll go straight to item number five. Take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane? Mr. President, we have seventeen applications before you tonight and recommend that they be approved. Second. Got a motion to approve applications by Mr. Farnham, a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item six, consideration of approving payments on all current invoices. Got a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item eight, consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated November 29, 2018. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Committee met last Thursday and the report is received. Report from planning staff regarding proposed revisions to Chapter Six of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Calcasieu, Louisiana, zoning and development. Recommended approving the following request. Approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract with CH Fenstermaker and Associates LLC for the Coach Williams Drive Extension Project. Two, approving the active sale agreement for the Carlos Drive Extension Project Phase Two. Approving the active sell, active transfer and acceptance agreement for the intersection improvements of U-Wyn Road Gloria Drive at US 171. Four, approving a temporary construction servitude for the Lincoln Road Bridge Replacement Project. Approving active sale agreements for the Roginal Road Bridge Replacement Project. Item six, accepting Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2015-07 as substantially complete. Seven, advised that a donation has been received for the Calcasieu Parish Animal Services for the Adoption Center. That's the end of my report, Mr. President, and I move to accept.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion by Mr. Brain to accept the report and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Skip ahead of myself and we'll go back to number seven. Number seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated November 1, 2018. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item nine, consideration of approving the Agenda Committee report dated November 29, 2018. Got a motion by Ms. Mayo and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Eleven, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the parish, excuse me. Ten, consideration of approving the Budget Committee report dated December 6, 2018. Mr. Farnham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee for the Police Jury met today at 5:00 PM and held a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019. After hearing comments, the committee made a motion to recommend approval of the parish budget for fiscal year 2019 at the Police Jury's regular meeting on December 20, 2018. The committee also recommended approval of the following requests from funding from the Gaming Fund. Item A, Ward 4, District 15, City of Salford, $2,000 for costs related to the Holiday House events during the Christmas Under the Oaks Festival in Salford. Item B, Ward 4, District 14, City of Westlake, $34,000 for the purchase of a John Deere tractor with mower. Item C, Ward 4, District 15, Recreation District Number One of Ward 4, $15,000 for the purchase of equipment for activities at the district. And item D, Parish-wide needs Burton Coliseum Complex, $200,000 for the purchase and installation of an LED marquee sign at the complex. This is the end of my report. All of these met with full approval and I move to accept.
Second. Got a motion to receive report by Mr. Farnham, a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item eleven, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the Parish of Calcasieu, State of Louisiana, to incur debt and to borrow from the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority, not exceeding $35 million, for the purpose of financing the cost of certain additions, acquisitions, repairs, and/or expansions needed to parish-owned works of public improvement. Mr. Delafield, good evening.
Mr. President, thank you. And members of the jury, we've all heard from time to time that when the stars align, great things happen. Well, three weeks ago, great things happened as a result of your parish administrator and your parish treasurer working so hard for you on this transaction that we're about to consider this evening. But let me back up a little bit. About three months ago, I received a call from Sean Toops, who's here with us this evening. He is your financial advisor on this transaction. And Whitney Laird, who was the bond underwriter on this transaction. They wanted to know whether I would support calling Standard &amp; Poor's Global Ratings Group and have them come down here, at our expense, of course, and meet with the parish to discuss this particular transaction and to review the finances of the parish. As a result of that, Whitney Laird put together a brochure that contained all of the work that Tammy had provided to her. And Tammy went through this thing with a fine-tooth comb and produced a wonderful PowerPoint presentation that your parish administrator basically walked through with Standard &amp; Poor's. And let me tell you, I've done this now going on forty-five years. I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly in this, but I've never seen a more stellar performance than was given by Brian Beam to Standard &amp; Poor's Ratings Group. And I promise you, I've been through a lot of this stuff. I've been through 500 to 1,000 rating meetings, and I've never had a better presentation ever given by anyone. And I have been through, in the last eighteen months, one of the worst I've ever been through with a local entity. But we won't talk about that. We're talking about good things here this evening, not the bad, okay? Let me say this. Last, two weeks ago, I was in Crowley doing a bond issue for them, and Whitney Laird pulled up her phone and showed me what Standard &amp; Poor's had just released, and it was AA+. If I had false teeth, they would have fallen out of my head. But I promise you, guys, understand, I've been doing this for a very long time, and I've always criticized these rating agencies for basically what I perceive the sins of the Civil War being visited upon us for many years. I could compare a financing in Indiana to a financing in Louisiana, and we always got the short end of the stick. But because Brian came in there and wowed them and then took them on a tour of the parish, they came back with a AA+ rating. The state doesn't have a AA+ rating. AA+ is a fraction of an inch below AAA, and AAA is no risk to the bondholder for loss of the principal of or interest on the bonds. This is stunning. I have never seen this in my entire practice. And I promise you, whatever you guys are paying Brian and Tammy, it ain't enough, because they were stellar. I can't say enough good things about what they did. I am stunned with the rating. And honest to God, that rating is going to save not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but several millions of dollars in interest cost for this parish over the term of those bonds. So if you don't pass this thing this evening, well, we need to go have a talk outside. But I'm telling you, this rating is a once-in-a-lifetime deal, and I am stunned by the rating. And you guys should be awfully appreciative of both Brian and Tammy for what they've done for you, because this is stellar work. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Delafield. We have any discussion, Mr. Latour?
Yes. First off, thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Jay, for a good presentation, for the kudos to Mr. Brian Beam and to his staff. You know, thank you all for what you've done. He told me previously that you've done a really good job in representing the parish. And you know, Calcasieu is booming. It does have a lot of promising future, and that's the reason the rating was, you know, as good as it is. But I do have a few questions. What exactly are we going to be building with the thirty-five million? Mr. Brian?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'll take that if it's okay. Little bit of quick history, Mr. Latour. Back, I think it was late 2016, the Police Jury authorized or approved the authorization of sixty, up to $60 million of bonding for what, the projects which I'll mention in a minute. Since, there's a lot of work, obviously, since that time. This $35 million request for your approval is now, we are now in a position to actually seek bond sales. So of the sixty, this is thirty-five million of the sixty million. So it ties to that because you already were authorized. The total projects will, actually, we think it, it's been two years now, they're probably going to exceed the sixty, but we do have some reserves. So the projects that are not only for this, but we're going to need another series later are the Family and Juvenile Court Building, which most of these are under far long in design. One exception to that is, the second one is Officer Juvenile Justice Services, which is under construction already. You know, had the bid on that, it's underway. A new Coroner's Office facility, which is at Kirkman and Preon Lake Road. All of these are very outdated buildings that need replacing. A new Animal Services Facility and significant repairs and upgrades at Burton Coliseum. It's not a new facility, but it's, it needs a lot of upgrades. Did I leave any out, Tammy? All of those are in different stages of design, but the thirty-five million here is not like for one particular project, it's as each is needed, but that's the list.
Okay, well, I do appreciate you telling me all that. I did visit the animal shelter, and it is in need of a lot of work. The only thing that I do have an issue with is, you know, I know that we're a very strong, stout parish, and you know, they say, you know, some debt isn't bad, but debt, when we could possibly phase this out through a duration of time? I mean, there's a lot of things that I personally would like, but I cannot afford, so I don't want to go and get any more debt to hurt myself or in the future. Just on the thirty-five million, even at a great rate, that which, thank you all for the job that you did do, but it could cost, it will cost, if we approve this today, $1.2 million just in interest in the first year, and for the duration of a loan, over $14 million. Like, I don't think that would be a very good, would not be very good stewards of our citizens' money to spend interest if we can actually prepare maybe an eight- or ten-year plan. You know, we could pull out eight or 10 million dollars a year, cut back on a few things instead of causing or wasting money for interest. I do hope that everyone takes that in consideration. You know, this is something that, you know, we pass a lot of ordinances that, you know, say that you live in the city. It affects maybe more of the rural areas. But this right here affects every single person throughout the parish. So voting on this is going to basically throw in money down the drain for your citizens, no matter where you live throughout the parish. You know, it's a great project, and thank you all for what you've done, but paying, you know, for thirty-five million, it's going to wind up costing us fifty million in the long run, that's not being good stewards of the parish's money. So I yield back, thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you, Mr. Latour. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Beam, back in 2016, when we first talked about this, wasn't it a unanimous vote telling you all to move forward with all these projects?
I'd have to check, but I believe so.
I'm pretty sure that it was. Which, when did this jury? I think we were, we were all here, it was the same group in 2016. Another side to that is if we take all that cash out and pay cash for it, Jerry Milner won't have that money working for us. And Jerry makes millions of dollars for us every year. So whatever that loan costs, it really doesn't cost that much, because you got to remember Jerry's holding on to your cash and has it all invested. So it's really, I wouldn't say it's a wash, I'm sure there's a cost, but believe me, Jerry's getting twice the return what the state of Louisiana gets, and he has for years and years. So, you know, any good business has debt. Debt's not a bad thing, as long as it's manageable. And obviously, Standard &amp; Poor's thinks it's very manageable, or you wouldn't be getting the rate that you've been given. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Latour?
Mr. Chris does bring up really good points. I don't know the money manager very well or know him by name, but even after what he's getting, you know, can't give the exact number, but we're still going to come up probably at least five to $700,000 a year just in interest, even though he's making a percent or percent and a half on the money. So we're still having to come up with quite a bit of money. I yield back, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. All right, I have a motion on the floor by, Mr. Scott.
The largest project would be the Family Court out of that thirty-five million, I'm assuming? That's, I mean, I'm just...
Yes, sir. When you add everything that has to be done with it, meaning, you know, the work around it and the connection to the juvenile judicial center, yes, yes, sir. Although that's still, we haven't finalized that design, but it will end up being the largest out of the group.
At, what is that, what is that one budgeted at right now?
Well, if, the building itself right now is probably close to, it's an excess of twenty, maybe between twenty and twenty-five million. However, the other things that have to go with it, meaning, you've got to, connecting it to the Judicial Center, we have to demolish the Magnolia Parking Garage. If you add all of that together, which technically isn't the building, it's going to be closer to somewhere between twenty-five and thirty, when it's all said and done. But that's multiple parts of a big project, and including work for a plaza in the front that would involve closing Peton Street. A lot more detail, but it's not just the building. I want to make sure everybody understands that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Latour?
Just to close, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I look at the budget, and I, just my perspective, I think that we could possibly squeeze out probably another fifteen to twenty million what we have in our current accounts. I say we use that money that we are sitting on, use it. Then in time, when we get more money, we stash a little bit more, build a plan, by eight to ten years, you pull five or six million dollars, and we could wind up, and I love all the guys, and it's nothing against, you know, the departments, I know there's need. I think we need to prioritize what projects we do start first. I know Animal Services is really bad, they're in a whole bunch of little bitty buildings, so let's start there with the money we have in the accounts, build from there. Few years, pre-plan, same thing like you're doing, you know, this is not our money, it's our citizens' money. Be very cautious, I yield back.
Thank you. Go ahead. Mr. Farnham?
Thank you. Brian, when we stack all of these projects up, it's far more than sixty million, right?
Yes.
If you had to stack all the costs on top of each other, ballpark number, what are we talking about?
Our current estimate is about seventy-eight million. But I want to address Mr. Latour's issue, because there's always, you know, there's a, can have a debate about when, you know, and we did. We, you know, when do you borrow, when do you pay as you go? We've had a long history here, and a good one, that pay-as-you-go, it's worked well. But I can tell you, so there's no confusion, we do not have the money to pay this off out of reserve. It would deplete reserves greatly, and we have been, especially, I'll give you one example, Juvenile Justice has been saving up for like ten years for this, and we've, so it's a combination of a lot of dedicated funds, which we already, today, Mr. Farnham, we feel we have those dedicated. Now, we're trying to keep the cost down, but the reality is, without putting that money aside, we couldn't pull these off. This is a, we feel very strongly that it's rare that you have to do it, but when you need debt, it is, it is actually a good tool when used correctly, it's not, and I'm saying this because if, if you were to see the condition that we are dealing with and to say, let's wait another, I don't know, five years, ten years, and then when we have all the money, I can assure you, the services, y'all will get complaints that we are not tending to our business. These are very much needed, and that's not just from us. We've had professionals on each one of these projects who are experts in this that says these are in dire need of upgrades. And I don't, I don't hear you disagreeing with that, Mr. Latour, I respect that. I'm saying that we felt it was worth the debt in this case, and the, as far as the interest, that that's, that is a price we can handle, and it is of great value for the trade-off. That's our opinion.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, when you stack all the cost up, and it far exceeds what we're talking about here, we're going to use part of our, part of our cash, our cash reserves to help meet the demand. And then we have a lot of buildings and a lot of facilities that are, that are kind of at the end of their life all at the same time. The needs for Juvenile Court have been there for many years already, and, you know, the public told us that they didn't want to pay any more money several years ago for those facilities, to do better, figure out how to do it with what you have. And I think we did that. The other factor in this, when you stop and think about it, is escalation of cost over ten or fifteen years, could very easily nullify the amount of interest that you're paying. And they think, we've seen escalation, you know, just blow our minds in most cases. So, you know, at first pass, there's a lot of money that you're going to spend on interest, but the more you think about it, you know, you can be penny-wise and pound-foolish, I think. So thank you all for your work that you've done on this.
Mr. President, can I just, I just want to add one more thing, just for a second. I greatly appreciate Mr. Delafield's comments, that he's very complimentary of the role Tammy and I played. But I want to assure you that the bigger story is, my opinion, is the years, years before I was administrator and when Tammy was assistant to Jerry Milner, the Police Jury's leadership, this jury and prior ones, in sound financial management, putting money aside, showing that we are a good risk, all of that plays into it. As the old expression goes, you stand on the shoulders of those that came before you. It's our role to administer those well, but the leadership that y'all have shown, and your predecessors as well, is really the key story to this. But it is, it is a great rating, we're very happy, and it will save a lot of money, but a lot of folks over many years have, need to get the credit for that. But I do thank Jay for saying that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scott. Mr. McMillan. Oh.
Could I add one more thing, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I understand Mr. Latour's point very, very well. I'm in the debt business, this is what I do for a living, okay? I know how that works. But two things. One, the real, one of the reasons why we got such a stunning rating is because of the debt policy this parish has and because of the reserves it has. And they expect you to maintain those reserves for a long period of time. Now, I was in Crowley on the evening that the rating came out, and the difficulty Crowley has, they're trying to scrape up $20 million to do a street layover project throughout Crowley. The architect that, the engineer, Tim Mater, said, you know, the difficulty we have is, a year and a half ago, Blacktop was at $70 a ton, it's now $90 a ton, and the price of oil's going up. The economy in this country is speeding up, costs are going up, and that's the point that Mr. Farnham was making a moment ago. That's the problem that you have with interest. Sometimes you can be penny-wise and pound-foolish, and that is, it's better to pay some interest to get the projects done, because you save, over the longer term, the increased cost of construction and materials. So that's something that you have to put into the formula as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you. I'd just like to go a record to say I am 100% in favor of this. This has been a well-thought-out plan. We've used the money wisely, we've been good stewards of this parish money for a long time, and now we have such a great rating that we can borrow this money at a very low interest rate, and we are putting money up first. And these projects are so badly needed, every one of these projects are so badly needed. We have a courthouse over there in Family Court where you have families right on top of each other, and these folks are going through some tough times, divorce, kids are involved. We need to build that center as quickly as possible. The Coroner's Office, where he's locked in with space, needs to be done immediately. The Juvenile Justice Center that we're already working on and plans to go on forward with, and of course, Animal Services. All these things that we're doing need to be done as quickly as possible to ensure the quality of life that we have here in Calcasieu Parish. This plan has been well-thought-out. Staff, I appreciate what you've done, and I will absolutely vote yes to support this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Farnham?
Yeah, I guess, just one last comment is, you know, just because you have that much funds available to you, doesn't mean that you have to go borrow every bit of it, you know? The more funds we have available to us to spend that we do have, we'll spend those first, and then borrow as we need, I would imagine. I guess that's in every business plan, that you have a good balance of spending of money that you do have versus the money that you borrow, so.
If I can respond to, that's a good point.
I'm sure it's part of your plan, but I'd like to hear your comments.
Yes, sir. It's a mixture, and we've got great advisors here, the team on this, as Jay mentioned, he and Mr. Toops and others give us great guidance at each phase. And I want to point out something too, and Tammy has been very strong about bringing this up in our discussions along the way. You have to, I think the way these are set up, we have to wait ten years, but after, these would be twenty-year bonds. But after ten, and it may have limitations, but you can, if you have funds, pay some down, which if any of us, you know, most of us have home loans, and if you can save that interest, we will, we would love to start doing that between year ten and twenty, which would save a good amount of interest. Can't guarantee it, but our goal is to try to pay them off early if we can, but the way the rules are of these bond issues, you have to wait till, I think, year ten. If I'm wrong, Tammy, correct me, but that, we're trying to save as much as we can if we can do that.
It's basically, while we're only going for thirty-five million now.
Yeah, and plus...
Versus going for the whole sixty right now.
Right, because, and Jay would have to answer this more detail, but you can, you have a certain period of time, once you issue bonds, to spend them, if you will, and we, you can only do so much at once. So we want to do it for what's constructible, if that's a word, in a maybe, you know, three to four-year period, but at some point, we'll come back with a second series proposal.
Mr. Latour?
That was rough. Mr. Latour.
I'm watching the clock, sir. We have a hearing at 6:00 PM. So we need to, actually, we need to go back.
Mr. President, why don't we finish this item?
Okay.
Hold on a second. Yeah, we gonna be here a while, as long as you don't do it before six. Six o'clock now.
Let's finish this. Go ahead, Mr. Latour.
All right, thank you. Out of curiosity, when is our next tax renewal, just out of curiosity, like, that's going to be paying for these notes or the next tax renewal that's going to be, just roundabout, just out of curiosity?
Well, the, there are various sources we're using to pay these off. Well, the, there are various sources we're using to pay these off. Gaming is one, so that's not a renewal. You're, you have two general fund taxes, technically three, I guess. One of them, two of them are called general alimony that are not, they don't, they're automatic, if you will. It's not vote. Courthouse and jail tax was just renewed, so it's got another ten years, beginning twenty-twenty. The juvenile justice tax is another contributor to this. It was renewed in twenty thirteen for a ten-year period, which is good because you still have several years left on that. And am I leaving another source out? I don't think that's. I'm sorry, I forgot about that. The Burton tax, if we use that, and just so you'll know, that is, I think, the next one that's probably, just because of timing, up for renewal, and that, I believe, could be, if not next year, twenty-twenty.
Okay.
Now, when they rate these, of course, that, that's a key point. They look at that, and if, if all of this was, say, contingent on just gaming, which is less stable, it's a lot harder to get that kind of rating. So we were very pleased with that.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate it, and everybody made up great points, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it. You bet.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Guidry?
Let me be real quick. Point of clarification, Mr. Beam. Didn't we discuss this some months back with the different entities as to where this money was going to go? And I'm just confused, like, it's brand new right now, but wasn't this discussed and voted on unanimously that we would move forward on this?
Well, you've had budget approvals that, yeah, yeah, we have communicated where the funds have come from. That's not a new item.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, but, Mr. President, I know we have a six o'clock action, so please, can we move on this item tonight?
Any further discussion?
The motion. I think the motion was to discuss.
Got a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr..
The motion was to discuss.
Was it to approve?
Okay. Motion was to approve.
I seconded it.
Seconded by Mr., by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. McMillan. We got a board ready. We got a roll call vote, Ms. Jessica.
Mr. Abshire?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Potts not here. Mr. Bream?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
No.
Ms. Mayo? Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Vice President White?
Yes.
And, and you?
Thank you.
Yeah, ten to one.
Okay, we're going to go back to item four. Item four, hold a public hearing at six P.M. Ordering said owners to, to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everybody. The first structure tonight to be condemned is located at twenty-four twelve Drum Drive. This is in the South Lake Charles area. It's one house. The owner is Agagno Properties LLC et al. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
I'm going to defer for thirty days is my motion.
Okay, we got a motion to defer for thirty days by Mr. Scott. And a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Oh, is there anybody here?
Yes.
To represent this property?
He doesn't, I mean, he doesn't have to speak because I'm already dealt with him. So, I mean, we don't really have to discuss it. We got thirty days because of the situation that's going on, so if you.
This property, this property was.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Murphy Bellard, ten on Islande West, Lake Charles, Louisiana, seven oh six oh one. This property was up for sale at the sheriff's auction. I had the, I had second highest bidder to seventy thousand, and I guess the owner had attorney skip withdrawal withhold it, but instead of y'all condemning it, I'll give the parish the seven thousand, and you can add it to that money y'all was discussing. And I'll, and I'll fix up the house.
Okay. Well, the item has been deferred, so.
Yeah, we've, we've got, we got a motion to defer. Mr. President, the motion to defer.
That'll be good.
That must need to be the deferral, but it's probably time to vote on that one then.
Go ahead. We're, okay, so we've got a motion to defer, second by, by Mr. Scott, second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Item deferred. I don't know.
All right, we're going to move on to B. It's five oh eight Fontno Road, South Lake Charles area. This is one accessory building. The owner is Joseph Como. We, we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
All right, we got a motion to condemn by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. White. Is there anyone here representing this property?
No.
Anyone here representing five oh eight Fontno Road? All right, any discussion? Any objection? Motion to condemn upheld.
The next one is C, five ten Fontno Road. This is South Lake Charles area also. It's one accessory building. The owner is Joseph Como. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
All right, I got a motion to condemn by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. White. Is there anyone here to represent five ten Fontno Road? Anyone here to represent five ten Fontno Road? No. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion to condemn upheld.
The last one is D. It's ten fifty-one Wedgewood Drive in the Moss Bluff area. We have two accessory buildings. The owner of record is a Danny Joseph Doucette, and we're recommending both of these structures be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Motion to condemn.
Same decorator. Got a motion to condemn by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Guidry. We got anybody from ten fifty-one Wedgewood Drive?
We do. We do.
Thank you, sir. State your name and, and address for the record, please.
My name's Danny Doucette, six ten Rosalie, Lake Charles, Louisiana.
It'll pick you up. You can, you can back to it.
I come to you right now with, I tell you, I'm, I've got a lot of emotional problems. I've had four funerals in, in less than a month. But I am going to stand up here for my rights. I live in District Five. My police jury is Brian Ashire. I don't know which one of y'all is Brian.
All right. Name's on the front.
Since. Since June, I've been trying to call this man. He has got my number blocked on his phone.
We're talking about your, your property.
Mr. President, all comments must be directed to the police jury as a whole.
So I come before you with no representation at all. This man is dishonest, and he's corrupt.
Yeah, that's, that's enough of that. You're.
The only way that he can block my number, I have an unlisted number. Nobody knows my number.
We're not here to talk about your phone records. We want to talk about your property.
Exactly. That's it.
The problem with my.
Why should we keep your property?
Because unless you got a report from a structural engineer, there's nothing wrong with those. Sure, the pictures look bad. Is it a law, against the law to have junky property? I can tell you right now, I can tell you right now, both of those buildings, the only way they've looked that way is because I was robbed. The little building in back is one of those little metal buildings from, I bought it Sears and put together. I had my lawnmower in there. I had it secured. There's no way anybody could break in. They tore the doors off the end and stole my lawnmower. I go to, I call the Sheriff's Department. They come out and write a report. They don't do anything. The same thing with my other building. I had a bunch of valuable stuff in this little boardable building. And I had it secured where they couldn't get in. They came in and tore the doors literally off. The reason why I have never repaired them is because if you repair them, they're just going to come and do it again. The Sheriff's Department is not going to investigate any crimes.
Okay.
So I, there's nothing, the pictures look bad. I've looked, I've seen the pictures. There's, they're structurally sound. There's nothing wrong with it. I can put the doors back on, but I, if I put it back on, somebody's just going to break them and steal my stuff.
Okay. We have any questions for the?
I'm, I'm a little bit confused, Mr. President. Is this structure in Moss Bluff?
Yes, it is.
Isn't Mr. Brian Abshire District in, in Lake Charles?
Yes, sir. I own property in, at six ten Rosalie, which is in the fifth district. And I tried to call him to get help. He has blocked my phone number.
But if you can't reach him, you can always call the office. Someone will always.
I did call the office, and this is what the lady told me. She said, this is the only number we have for you. I'll put you on hold, and I'll call him. She called him. He answered on the second try. I turned around, I called him over a dozen times.
Mr. Robinson?
And he has my number blocked.
Has this gentleman contacted you about this property?
I've, I've been in his office two times. That is an absolute lie.
Okay, again, we're not, we're not talking about phone records. We're talking about make a case why we should keep this, why you get to keep your property and, and not, and us not condemn it.
Because they're structurally sound. There's nothing wrong with it. Doors have been pulled off, and it looks bad. The little brown building in the back is a metal building I got from Sears. It's rusted.
Okay.
But it's structurally sound. There's nothing wrong with it.
Okay, we've heard that part before. You got anything new to say about that? Anything new? Anything we haven't heard about why we should keep your property and not condemn it?
Is there any way I can make a statement concerning, I think I'm being unjustly judged and criticized by the planning department?
You just said it.
It has a.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, no, can I, can I, can I say one thing? Under the Fourth Amendment of the United States, it says that you are not allowed to come on my property unless you have a court order. They had a complaint about grass was high. They have a right to go look. Unfortunately, the Supreme Court has said it's okay for you to walk on my property and look at the grass. They do not have a right to go with a microphone, to walk through my whole property and look at everything. That is against the law. And I'm asking you right now to hold off on anything.
We'll consider that.
I have filed a complaint
Okay.
in federal court
Okay.
because you violated my Fourth Amendment.
That's not, that's not.
And I'm telling you right now, and like I've told this man, in his, in his office and his supervisor.
That's enough. That's enough. Stand down.
You are not allowed to come on my property
I said, stand down.
unless you have a court order.
Mr. President.
Do we have a motion to condemn?
Mr. President, I think there was a question posted, Mr. Robinson. If, if Mr. Robinson comes to the podium.
Mr. Robinson, would you like to come and answer that question? Step back, please, sir.
Y'all please repeat the question. Yes, can you please repeat the question?
Who had the question? Mr. White?
Mr. Robinson, as, this is within my district, and I've had plenty of phone calls with this. I move forward with condemning. I don't need any other explanation, honestly. Just a move to condemn.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Got a motion to condemn by Mr. White, a second by Mr. Landry?
Can I say what?
No, sir. Any further discussion? Any objection? That item carries.
John, moving on.
Jessica, thirteen?
We already did twelve, huh? We voted on that, huh?
No.
No, we're on twelve.
All right, we are moving on to item twelve. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the call for an election by the Board of Commissioners of Ward One Fire Protection District, number one, authorizing the renewal levy and collection of a six and forty-three one-hundredths, six point four-three mil ad valorem tax on all property subject to taxation. I've got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the call for an election by the Board of Commissioners of Ward One Fire Protection District, number two, authorizing the renewal levy and collection of a six and one-half, six point five mil ad valorem tax on all property subject to taxation. So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. White? Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Fourteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and McNeese State University, MSU, for MSU to utilize the Burton Coliseum complex for educational and athletic activities and/or events. Got a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Mayo? Any discussion?
Do that.
Mr. Farnum? Yes, sir.
I don't know who's Brian, I guess.
Or Jason, if you need to ask him. I think, is he still here?
What, what are we, what are we authorizing here?
Well, the, for years, you've had an agreement with McNeese for utilization of the Burton complex. It's just coincidental that, the reason it's on here is because it expires at the end of this year. It's simply a, it's time to renew it. Now, what has happened very recently, as you know, one of the primary things they use it for was basketball. They now have their own facility. That's coincidental that while it's on here. So we just, we're also updating that agreement. It doesn't refer to.
So at one point, they, they ran.
Yeah, they actually ran it up until, I think, twenty thirteen, where you, you reestablished.
This isn't, this isn't to go back in that direction.
Oh, no, sir. This is honestly.
So this is just putting a C E A in place so that if they need it, they can use it.
Well, it's been in place. It's just right to keep it in place. You're, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Okay, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum. Any further discussion? Any objection? Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the industrial tax exemption contract between the state of Louisiana, the Louisiana Department of Economic Development, and Juniper Specialty Products LLC with respect to its manufacturing plant project locating, located at nine fifty Interstate Ten West, West Lake. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. White? Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item sixteen, consideration of adopting a resolution denying the industrial tax exemption application for South Alexander Development Ten LLC with respect to its manufacturing facility located at six hundred West Goche Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana, and further authorizing the president of the police jury or his designee, when appropriate, to execute all documents related thereto.
I can recline my, my second.
Mr. President, I think the motion was made to approve the denial, and I don't think that was the intent.
No, that's wrong. I did not, I didn't want to make that motion. Sorry. Okay. Staff recommend, request that this item be deferred to the regular meeting on December twentieth, two thousand eighteen. So what is our motion? I'd like to make a motion to not deny them tax exemption.
I second that.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Call him, Mr. Gabb.
Mr. Gabb.
We got a little confusion here.
Yeah, we do.
The end result, Mr. White, that you want to have is that they get the exemption.
Correct.
So let's make the motion to, to grant industrial tax exemption to the applicant, to South Alexander Development.
That's what he said. Yes, that's my motion. So we have a motion by Mr. White to grant tax exemption to the applicant.
Correct.
And a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 17. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Louisiana Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness for the 2018 Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program for acquisition and/or elevation of flood-prone residential structures in Calcasieu Parish. Got a motion by Mr. Scott, a second by Mr. Latour. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Beam, I just want to put this on the record that I am in favor of adding money to the budget, whether it's this year or beginning next year, to buy up open space. If the federal government thinks this is a good idea to be buying these repetitive properties, when we spend all this money on the Contraband Bayou watershed, there are properties along that watershed that would cost us a whole lot less money to buy them and take them out of being developed and dirt brought into them than to have them developed later and become a problem. And it would help us with the millions of dollars on Louisiana Avenue, the regional watershed we're building. So if we can find open space and pay for it now, for every dollar we spend, we'll gain $6 in the future. So I just want the jury to be aware of that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any further discussion on that? Any objection? That item carries. 18. Consideration of approving...
Move on 18, all bullets.
The adjudicated property sale conducted on October 30, 2018. A, 300 block of South Railroad Avenue in Lake Charles, Belinda Harper for $100. B, 1720 Hillma Street in Westlake, Julius Phipps for $5,700. C, 2713 Glenlea Street in Lake Charles, Murphy Bellard for $34,000. D, 2424 Benita Drive in Lake Charles, Darian Williams for $21,000. E, 2509 North Flounder in Lake Charles, Mash Rentals LLC for $23,000. F, 300 block of Royer Loop in Sulphur, Carolion Weber Limkey for $100. G, 307 Royal, Royer Loop in Sulphur, Carolion Weber Limkey for $100. Got a motion by Mr. Collins, all bullets, and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 19. Consideration of adopting ordinances rescinding the following adjudicated property sale ordinances. A, ordinance 7015, and B, ordinance number 7016. I got a motion to rescind the ordinances by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. 20. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving updates to the 2016-2020 Combined Local Regional Workforce Plan for Workforce Area 51. Got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. 21. Consideration of adopting the parish purchasing agent to advertise for bids or requests for proposals for the following. A, file box storage shelving, and B, case management software.
Move on 21, all bullets.
Got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 22. Take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent for the following. A, mosquito control chemicals and sewer pumps and related parts. Agenda note, the staff recommends the low-responsive bids of Adapco Incorporated Clark Mosquito Control Products Incorporated and Target Specialty Products be accepted. Sewer pumps and related parts, the staff recommends the low-responsive bid of Magnolia Pump and Equipment Incorporated be accepted. Get all bullets?
Yes, sir.
Who seconded it?
Wait, we did all bullets. B, mosquito control chemicals and solvents. Agenda note, the staff recommends the low-responsive bid of Target Specialty Products be accepted. C, small animal pens, the staff recommends the low-responsive bid of Northeast Gate Company be accepted. I had a motion by Mr. Latour on, for all bullets, and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. 23. Consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the Burton Coliseum Complex Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Age Back Upgrades and Improvements Project as substantially complete. I got a motion by Mr. Scott, a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 24. Consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late...
Move on 24.
Wildridge Doucet, former mayor of the city of Westlake. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. White. Discussion? Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. Oh, Wildridge Doucet, Coach Doucet, as we call him, Mayor Doucet, he was a city councilman. He was on the school board at times. He served his community. He was in the military. He was a veteran. He had five daughters that he raised, and all of them turned out to be great contributors to our parish and all have families. Wildridge, or Coach, or Mayor, as we all called him, was just a guy that, he was always there for you. He was good with giving you advice. He had fought a lot of battles and seen a lot of things happen, both politically and in life in general. And he was well-loved by the citizens of Westlake and is going to be well missed. So this condolence is something I know will mean a lot to his family, and I appreciate this jury supporting it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion on that? Any objection? Item carries. 25. Consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Charles Ray Henigan. Got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 26. Take appropriate action on the terms of the following members of various boards and district. A, Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visors Bureau.
Move to appoint Mrs. Willie Mount.
One, Mr. Samuel V. Wilkinson. Appoint, we have a motion to appoint Ms. Willie Mount by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item 2, Mr. Brian Levens.
Move to appoint Mr. Kane Mitchell.
Got a motion to appoint Mr. Kane Mitchell by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item 27 is advise items.
Move to adjourn.
Item 28.